Oh, yeah, look where I look where I am. Want to be tell?
I'd like to call the meeting to order. Ms. Hamilton, here. Mr. Malcataano, it's here. Mr. Cantala?
Here.
Ms. Kuduski?
Here.
Mr. Del Tufo?
Here.
Mr. Arcuni?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Dr. Marchese?
Here.
Ms. Tambora?
Here.
Mr. Cazera?
There.
Commissioner Tucci?
Here.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Here.
Uh, Mr. Cantala, would you please sit for, uh, Mr. Malcataano? Pursuant to requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, notice that this meeting was included in the annual regular meeting for the year 2024 as advertised in store nature on December 7, 2023, and in her own newsman, Nutley Five, December 4, 2023, with a copy posted on the Township Council bulletin board first of each town hall. Copies filed in the office of the Township Clerk and copies are available to all the general public. Where else can you do that? Um, I have a further notice to read because this is our special meeting. Please take notice, a quorum of the governing body may be present at the regular scheduled planning board meeting on Wednesday, April 24, 2024, at 7:00 P. M. And please take notice, a quorum of, quorum of the zoning board adjustment may be present at the regular scheduled planning board meeting of Wednesday, April 24, at 7:00 P. M. Please take notice, a quorum of the Board of Education may be present at the regular scheduled meeting, planning board meeting of Wednesday, April 24, 2024, at 7:00 P. M. And please take notice that in addition to the regularly scheduled meeting of the planning board, the joint meeting of the planning board, zoning board adjustment, the Board of Education, and the governing body will take place immediately following the regular scheduled meeting of the planning board to review and discuss land use and other issues affecting the township of Nutley as related to the zoning board adjustment and planning board. And please take notice that formal action may be taken. And please take further notice, the meeting will be held in 44 Park Avenue, Room 300, Nutley, New Jersey, et cetera, et cetera. And, um, this meeting is also being, um, broadcast on Zoom. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Cazera, do we have any, um, bills filed that have? Have you had a chance to review the minutes from the last meeting? Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
On my favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or extended? Thank you. Uh, Mr. Cazera, communications and board bills.
We have, we have two bills to approve. The first one is for Ms. Cazera for attending the theft preparation meeting. So, the bill can be out of $150, which I find to be fairly favorable.
Is there a motion to approve?
Oh.
Is there a second?
I said.
On my favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or scratched? Thank you.
The circuit is, uh, if approval respect to, uh, meeting and my attending study, over street soul construction moving the, uh,
At a much lower level with Dave and you know, we get into the nitty gritty of some of the recommend- some of the recommendations. And as Frank, as you mentioned, you know, we made some significant changes to some issues that were really affecting many of our citizens such as, you know, the issue about air conditioning units and HVAC units on the side of the house. That was causing a lot of people problems with some of their expansions in their homes. So we did that, you know, prior to making changes to density. And so these, these meetings, although kind of formal in this setting, really result in some changes, proactive and positive changes that are made. That's what I want to make sure everybody was aware of that.
Thanks Jerry, I agree. I think that it's, it's very valuable and we value your input and we'll get to work. Some of our workshops, which is just, um, are there any other comments from any of the board members to see things? Okay.
Oh, yes.
Frank, you said something about passionate lighting and I'm making a note.
What did you wrote?
But I was, I was making a note when you did and I actually wrote lighting. Yeah, I didn't know what that was about.
Lighting is, um, something signed, signed.
So that was your?
Yes, Patricia's concern. Yeah, Patricia wanted to comment on that. She goes, what are your ideas?
With a lot of homeowners and commercial businesses switching over to LED lights, there seems to be an inconsistency in town in terms of the types of fixtures that they use and also the intensity and amount of foot candles that are spread upon the property. And so a lot of towns in the end, in our immediate area have instituted lighting requirements, not only specifically to existing incandescents when, when a property owner or business is changing over to LED, but to look at the types of fixtures that are suitable for that particular property, but also how it fits into the neighborhood specifically for our downtown area. Where, you know, and, and, and some of this also is connected to what we had looked at last year with the vape shops. There, there is some lighting in town that doesn't really seem to conform to the ordinances as written. But it's really a gray area, especially the ones that seem to be chaser lights and they're, they're very bright. So i- it's the type of thing that if we were to look at some of the, the ordinances and guidelines that other towns have put into place, I think would be really something that would enhance not only downtown, but our neighborhoods.
In addition to that, you've got a, you've had gas stations, we've had a lot of gas stations now that have the little shops and come to us and I know we've stopped them, especially in your form, using green. Also green lights and we tried to give them go to red and at one point they suggested about just using a white light. We said, okay, fine. Well, now these, the light, yeah, we do like. Very bright, the white light. So we've got away from that on our own, but maybe we should look at things like that.
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to take one moment just to thank everyone for serving and what are pretty much thankless jobs. And sometimes depending on the decisions that you render, you're either a hero or most hated person in town. Next to the commissioners, that is, but that's okay. All right. And to follow up on what Jerry said, uh, you know, I know we had previously addressed a lot of what we call the low hanging fruit. All right. So people didn't have to go through a process to get to where they needed to be. But there's still some outstanding issues I know that we still need to address. So I think we need to get back on track and, and start whittling down whatever's remaining. Thank you.
I just have, I just like to commend you also on the package deliveries, trucks. Running new construction to put something in there where there is a drop off point. Because although we do not want to give working people tickets, it is becoming havoc through the town with all of FedEx, Amazon. So if the future, and I didn't even think to do that. So I just like to say thank you for putting that in there because it is a big issue and I've never seen anything like it where they were even delivered 10, 11 o'clock at night now. So. Bucket truck is where it's on itself. So that's a great idea to put that in there. Thank you.
Any other comments from anyone? Is there anyone from Dave? Do you read your notes? Do you have any comments?
I could start. No, I'm loud. I have a big mouth. The chairman and I, we didn't even get together and we have, I have about nine items and me and you connected on, um, a lot of them together. So first of all, I want to say thank you for the work that we did last year with the commissioners and the planning board. The common stuff had zoning board because I already started helping, we, my code, our code department already started helping people out. This spring with air conditioning condensers, with dryways, with, with a little bit of relief helped out a lot of people. Um, and, and when I look at a survey and I explain to them at the counter, saying, you know, last year you wouldn't be able to do that. This year, you know, the township made a lot of important changes. They're very thankful for that. So you guys don't hear that. But, you know, not to send somebody for a variance on something that we all worked on. It's, 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 it's a great thing. Especially the board is so busy, the zone board schedule is so busy this time of year. Um, there was about maybe 14, I tried to count approximately about 14 changes that we all made last year. That were great changes. Um, there are a few other changes that we were on my list from last year that I would love to get onto the list. My thought was after tonight, we would create a large list. And I believe we would maybe do some of the simpler ones and then come up with, I know whenever, whenever we have a workshop, we'd like to have like a little agenda on the items that we would come up with. So there are going to be too many. We're going to have to come up with, you know, a master list of the items, some smaller items. But last year when we met, we had a draft ordinance on short-term rentals. And there was some language that needed to get changed. And it's, um, it's in draft form and I could circulate it to the planning board. And that's something that's probably pretty simple, but we need to just change uh, the regulations on short-term rent, Airbnb's and short-term rentals. We started working on it last year. And it was really close, but there was a couple of small items that, um, some of the board members wanted to add. Um, there was a small item on mechanical equipment in commercial zones. We may change it in residential zones, but there was discussions on commercial properties, Franklin Avenue, Center Street. Do we want to see, uh, we all see mini splits. They're, they're, they're getting installed like, like crazy. Do we want to see them on faces of walls? We had discussions on this. So that would be something that's easy to, to take care of. Um, the pods in the storage containers, that was, there was another ordinance that we had a draft on. And, um, there was some language that we just felt that needed to get changed. Um, that would be one of the items that I would like to keep on the list. The last item, when we had a workshop, we started talking about basements and bathrooms and like the orientation of a basement, basically in a residential house, a one and two family. That's a, that's a really, and if I had my own way, I might put that all the way to the top. Because I'll be honest with you, as a code official and my partner Paul, that's one of the toughest things we do for Nutley is basements. What you can do in a basement, what can you do? Could you put a stairway? You know, could you not put an outside stairway? Could I have a separate dwelling unit? We know you can't. That is something, could I have an office? Everybody wants to work at home. That's something that comes across our table all the time. And I would love to get some clarity on what the township wants in a basement, in a residential, one and two family dwelling. Um, board applications, apartment buildings, committee, they all get looked at by the town. But a residential property is very difficult for us. We do all the inspections when somebody sells. We all know there's these old, the old kitchens that were down there, you know, people fix them up. You know, sometimes we go down any, uh, 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 a basement, there's a kitchen, there's a bathroom and an office and separate door. What is all that? That's a dwelling. I mean, really? Oh, it's an office. Take the bed out. So, I mean, you know, but, but the town needs clarity. What does the town want in a basement? If somebody comes to me with four walls like this and they want to file a permit for a basement alteration, what does the town want? What are we allowing? Certain town, you know, a lot of towns have restrictions on this. And we, that's a very important issue on mine. And Carl would be happy if I mentioned that because it's a struggle. With that basement, this year I'm getting a lot of asks for families moving together. They want to build spaces, build additions. Um, I don't know if anybody's seen, um, the governor, there's a, there's a, I don't know if it's an official law yet, but there's something that's out there, what's called accessory dwelling units. It's a really popular subject between us code officials. I believe we need to, I read it pretty good. I believe we, I believe that the town is supposed to come up with some guidelines on what we want in order to have this accessory dwelling unit. But I'm going to tell you, I get asked a lot for this. Um, we all see what the prices of houses are. People like to move in together. I was with somebody today, she's older, she has a daughter, she lives in Weehawken, she wants to move here. She's like, Dave, I want to build an accessory unit. I don't need a 2,300 square foot house. So, um, I said to her, I'm absolutely going to, you know, bring it up and talk about it, but it's a growing need. Architects call me, we, we, we try to create spaces where, where they're not separate spaces. That's the only way I could legally do it now. Uh, you know, somebody lives on the first floor, somebody lives on the second floor. There's a kitchen on the third floor, a kitchen on the second floor, but there's a common stairwell and an opening and it's not a separate outdoor. Use the same front door. That has been historically allowed in our township. But people are looking for a little bit of like, my mom and dad are moving here and they, uh, they, they, you know, want some, 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 some separate space, you know?
I'm glad you brought that up because that's something I've been needing to bring up to the planning board for action the last several months. Because Montclair has just passed an ordinance permitting accessory dwellings.
Yeah, Fairfield too.
And I think that it's something that we really have to look into because it's something that could completely change the complexion of this town. And I think it's definitely something we have to.
Yes, it's hard. It sounds easier than it is because, you know, one minute you create an apartment for your mom who's going to live there. And the next minute you sell your house and before you know it, now you have these spaces in here. The house is 900,000. How am I going to afford it? Well, how do people live there? So it's not, it's, it's very difficult to, 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 to have two dwelling units and say you're going to use it for family. And then down the line, the house sells and then it's used differently. So that's, that's going to be a challenge.
Well, I think in some instances they're discussing not even using it for family.
Yeah.
But actually making a rental unit.
I'm getting asked all the time. Today I got asked by somebody who's a Nutley Aid their whole life and they don't want to leave, you know? People are like moving away. Like they're selling their houses because they could buy a house in, in, you know, Fairfield and they're going to move in, they're moving with their daughter, you know, it's just what they, it's a new, it's a new thought that people want to do. And that goes along with that basement thing. Cause that's something that, you know, it's, they kind of go together. You mentioned the stormwater. That's something that we, you know, I, I work with our engineering department, Sal and I and our DIPD R engineer, um, we, we work on these applications for residential stormwater when somebody's constructing like a, a bar, a big heart escape backyard, a big pool, a gazebo, a, a kumpu, you know? And, and they come in to see me and we, we determine that, you know, they really need to install some sort of dry well. So, you know, the engineering department helps me in, in working with the applicant to kind of show them that they should be, they should be doing something with their stormwater. Because our code says that you can't have your stormwater go on your neighbor's property. Somebody comes in and they max out all their coverages. They put a big addition in, they put a pool in and they max out the coverages. Well, where are your water going to go? You know, I'm putting my house to six feet to the setback. It's, it, you know, so we do work on those applications a lot, but our code needs to reflect what you would do on a one and two family. Um, Sal and I, we talk about it a lot with Penoni, our township engineer. We're trying to get ideas. Um, Sal's getting other ordinances from other towns. We recently been speaking about this. So it's just something that's on our list that it's a very important topic. Uh, I would recommend that when, I, I've been noticing more and more coverage, um, variances. If you guys notice, I'm, I'm really sharp with the code department. We're checking coverages. Everybody who wants to do something, payers, that's our, that is, these landscape guys are coming into our town. They're not working without a permit. They're covering up people's backyards and it's, it's happening a real lot. And we look at the coverages all the time. Um, I wrote a denial letter for today for somebody. I gave him a permit for his pool. He covered his whole backyard in payers. His whole backyard. He's going to come to the board. I recommend if somebody's going to install and max out their coverages, they should be, they should be forced to put a dry well in. Um, and I like the fact that when, a couple of the variances that you guys granted, you, you put the comment in to have the engineer, um, review and that helps me get the township engineer involved. I'm not an engineer. I don't have a degree in, in, in stormwater and it gets me, get the engineer to look at it, which is better for the town.
We've been asking a lot for, um, you know, dry wells, where we touching? Pretty much every time someone comes in front of us, for driveway coverage and all, we.
I like that. That's.
The only thing is, we did have one case where, um, they came in front of us, I can't remember what it was. He said, well, we figured for a 25 year storm. And I said, wait, you know, guy before him was a 100 year storm. So we can get, you know, I guess we can go by square footage or lot of coverage.
When they gave it for you on that, was it, was it just a regular residential variance or was it like a site plan application?
No, no, it was residential.
If we give two residential, the first one said, we're going to do a hundred year storm, uh, watch basin. And then the next guy obviously will, will do 25 years. We're like, the other guy did 100. Can't you do 100?
Our engine, our engineering department right now is helping us come up with a standard way to, to, to handle residential construction lighting. Um, a standard dry well, a standard rain guard, a few different, this way a resident can come in. They don't have to hire engineer, township engineer ready to, if you install the, it, it's going to be based upon square footage. If you install the 400 square foot so-and-so, you need to do this. If you install the thousand square foot backyard, you need to do this. It's based upon, it's based upon coverages and it's based upon, it's just arithmetic.
You can work still be, still be based on, should still be based on a hundred year. Why are we, why are we following 25?
I think that's a question for our township engineer.
Right. That's, that's what we need to look at.
That's, but you have to, you say that though, a hundred year. But Nutley's a built up town. So Nutley's a town where you have, you have area and you might not have the room. If you start calculating, I did it last week with Difty. We started figuring out square footage for a certain yard and she's doing the arithmetic and she's talking to Sal and they're coming up with sizes of holes that have to happen. It was, it was a massive hole in an existing house and the person was, um, they're putting a driveway in. And they were installing a front walkway and the contractor, Vissani, a good contractor, he just took it on his own. I'm doing this job. I want to put a, a tank in. So we do this arithmetic and it was like an eight foot by four foot, by four foot deep hole in the front yard. So I think really the township engineer has to come up with a, you know, a formula that works for our township based upon how it's built up. Right. It's not Fairfield, but this is Nutley. It's, it's built up. There's a lot of coverages. It's just, it's something that has to get looked at.
Maybe the location, different locations in the town.
Yeah. It's not easy with the town like ours that built up. It's not, it's not. Um, and you do know like on a site plan application, on any site plan application that comes to either board, our township engineer is required to do a review. So on those type of applications, they're always going to be involved with recommending drainage outlets and stormwater and the type of, what we really need is the residential ones that's inconsistent.
Residential.
Yeah. I sometimes I get people that tell me I don't want to do it. I'm not doing it. I don't care what your engineer says. There's nothing blocking it.
Why? It's not.
I told you, you're in black and white.
There's nothing in the code. I, you know. Then I say, well, well, be prepared because if your water runs on your property, you're going to get a violation. And then kind of, it kind of like morphed into like, well, you're doing this hundred thousand dollar pool. What's the big deal? You spend another X amount on it. But I will tell you, they're starting to get expensive now. Really expensive.
Leave the pool empty. Let it fill up. I say the more pools are better.
I like it.
We had discussed this at one of our, a couple of our meetings about, you know, requiring a, a multi-home landscape from your property line to your tables or to your.
But that was one of our great changes we made. That's in the code today. When somebody comes, when somebody comes to us today and they want to cover their whole backyard or a big portion of their backyard and they want to go to the property line, I tell them, no, you can't do it. You need to have a three foot setback buffer. Already we're doing it and, and creating buffers in between property lines. So it's, that's something that we, our engineer recommended that last year. That's why it was on the list last year. In a rear yard.
There's another one we did.
Yeah, that was one of the 14. That's a great one. I want to, I'm already working on it with, uh, our, our engineering department, but the, we need to revise the zoning map. And that's something that is something that's really important. Um, Sal came up to me a couple of weeks ago. He's already talking to Penoni about, um, the revisions on the zoning map. He asked me for, um, you know, I go through the map, but sometimes there's, there's inconsistencies in the map. Our tax assessor has, you know, changes and I know that's something that he's working on. But it is something that I believe has to eventually come to the planning board for them to look at and then eventually to the commissioners. It's something that's really important. I worked on application. I'll tell you a boo hoo that I did. I did a zoning, uh, a letter and when I do a zoning letter, I identify the zone. I look at the map. And it was for the property over here, this, um, um, what's that property over here? This, uh, the rug place right here.
Right.
The right, the rug place. So I write them a letter. They want to, um, they want to go for a use variance. They want to make that auto body shop. The same auto body shop in the building next door. It's a use variance regardless of any zone. But I go look at the map and the map says, uh, I believe it says M1. I write the letter, I put M1, use variance required. It's not permitted. And then Paul Ricky did some research and he, and he came up and he found the M2 ordinance. And the M2 ordinance is, is written in context. It's written in text in the ordinance, but it's not on the map. So then it was a notice requirement and we had to, you know, it was innocent on my end, but it's just something I would really love to get the zoning map fixed for us. It would be helpful for everybody that works on, on, on it. Okay? I got two more things. Our township attorney Jonathan, my commissioner and Sal for our, been helping me out with a little bit of an issue. I have some issues with some, with a right, with some right of way issues with the township, what pertains to sidewalks and safeties. And I would just like to kind of open up the fact to do some research. And I think our, our township attorney is helping us on the right of ways. Who's responsible? I have issues with sidewalks and some trees and so forth. And I just want to make sure that our code and our township is up to date with what is supposed to happen in a right of way and who's responsible and who enforces. And I just want to, I need that clarity as a code officer. A lot of stuff comes my way. And I'm a helping guy. I want to help out the tree guy. I want to help out the sidewalk guy. But we need to just make sure that our attorneys are helping us look into the right of way to see what I'm supposed to do upon a closing, upon an unsafe issue. And it would be really helpful if we could just look into that right of way.
Is that typical to commercial? What do you mean?
Right of ways is the same throughout the whole town. Doesn't matter.
The issues that are happening typically in the commercial area, do you like?
Nah, mostly residential.
Yeah.
Yeah. But what to your question? Drives me crazy. Sometimes I see somebody on, um, you know, on, on, on Franklin Avenue was weed sticking out of the sidewalk. Who, 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 who does that? I don't, I, I, I don't send a property maintenance violation on that. I don't, I don't cite them. You know, but it's just something that we should look at and just see, you know, what is the town? We all live in the town. We don't want to see sidewalk, you know, sometimes there's a vulnerable property and they're, the landlord, you know, the tenant doesn't do anything, right? They, they, oh, the owner's going to do that and then it doesn't happen. So. The last one is that variance thing that you brought up. That's something that is something that, um, for, for the longest time, there was this permit extension act. And that was a great thing because all these approvals got carried on and carried on. But now that there's no permit extension act over the past couple of years, our code in chapter 85 has this expiration. So the chairman, you know, you said it correctly. Once you get the variance, if you don't commence the variance, it's expired. That's a struggle for me, a real struggle. Because I dealt with two people today who went for fence variance. Who, you know, Dave, it was COVID. You signed up for me, you know, could I have my variance? And I'm like, you know, it's, it's just something that I would like if we could, maybe other towns could, you know, have maybe there's some ideas on how we could extend this or, I, I know we can't say a big variance you could, but a small variance you can or something, but, you know, I, I just think that this chapter 85, I know hasn't been looked at in more than 20 years. And I just think that that's something that, um, we need to look at. It's really important.
Dave, what do you feel with the topics that are starting and have seemed to be going anywhere? I mean, for example, that property on Center Street, I don't think anything has been done there.
Which property?
Um, there's some new construction that's going on on the Center Street.
They're just very real slow. I'll be honest with you. Um, we're all over that. Our engineering department's all over that. If you know, you've been there, we've been there. We've done numerous inspections. There, I believe, I know they're waiting for steel right now. They're ready for a steel. They're waiting for a steel phone. I don't know why it's taken a, you know, a little bit longer. The only thing I'll tell you is the, the builder, when we were going over the permit process was very open and honest. He said, Dave, I never built a building like this before. It's going to take me a little bit longer and, and, and he hired a good contractor. He's got a good guy who's a boots on the ground. You're just moving a slope, you know? What do I do? There's nothing much I can do. There's nothing much I can do. The only thing I can do is make sure the job is, is, is clean and neat. Our nice, our, our Penoni inspector was there one day doing an inspection and he didn't like the way the sidewalk was. It was all ripped up and all unsafe. He put on his list. He made them make asphalt and just make a temporary safe sidewalk. But, you know, that's what we did. But we can't start or we're going to, you know?
Um, any questions of Dave while we have continued?
I just want to say, Dave, your department always works very well with us and close with us, you and your whole department. And what you don't hear, there's a lot of times when we get people up at these hearings, a lot of the people have good things to say about our building, our zoning, our building department, uh, mostly. I'll say it all. But we all talk about what they've said. But, uh, they do say that, you know, I've got a lot of healthy day, the people and the people in the department are very, very helpful. So you're not here, you're going to get a little department's bad name.
Yeah, I think that the biggest complaint that we're going to get now is timeframe. You know, we hold their hand. We help them do the applications. I mean, well, sorry, you see what I do. I do all the surveys for them. If I, if I didn't do that, it would cost them, they'd have to go hire an engineer.
Yeah, yeah. We have to look at this.
But it takes a long time, you know, to get them on. Like, you know, one thing I was going to try to maybe sneak and ask. We have these two applications on for these big applications. Maybe the voting board might be nice enough to maybe think about a meeting for the, the little people in like June or something, or the end of May or something.
We, we do look at that and we, you know, summertime stuff.
I know, I know.
But what we have done though, we usually try to get the people that have employers and things first. But what we've been doing lately, like one case is there and we know it's going to take a long time. We try to get them in ahead so you can go home, since it's over a three hour presentation to find out if it broke.
Yeah. So I find that most people, you know, they just, they wait to go for their, they just, they just take a long time to, to, to get in front of it. You know, to get their paperwork ready and.
Well, that's tough. We just, we're so moral.
We have a busy two months coming up. You're not going to like Meg. I don't know. You better, you better get me to go to be there all night.
Um, any, any other, any other questions for Dave? It's my thank you, Dave, very much.
Good job, Dave.
We gotta, we gotta, we gotta, it's a prioritized list.
Right.
So we'll start with kind of.
Yeah, the chairman.
It's got 14, you see, we're going to.
Yeah, the chairman brought up a lot of good comments. I mean, I just have a few things. Some of them are really simple. Yeah.
A workshop. She can actually reach, we'll have, we should have that. She will help them with that.
Okay, okay.
Is there anything from the public who has any questions of any of these boards? Seeing none, if there's nothing else to come before the war of the season, um, I'll entertain a vote into a chair.
So moved.